With Dan Travica, Dan Tonder, Frank. Talking anyway about some different things because we've got to go into that agreement for maintenance. Is that right Bob?
Yeah.
Maybe Bob can, Bob knows more about it.
Sure.
Bob should come talk.
Yeah, Bob, come up here. And that was me second.
Yep.
I guess we talked about pole inspections. Their company inspect their poles every ten years. That's what we've been doing also. They did a pole inspection on two thousand and eleven. And their thoughts were that we go with their contractor to have all our poles inspected as well. Under their specs. Their engineer feels more comfortable doing any engineering, I guess. Having their specs on our poles.
Okay. What the difference would be between. Okay.
Yeah, they drill three times into the center. And do testing starts rock insects where we were just doing a single bore. The other service that they're going to provide is actually every single pole is going to be GPS. As part of their mapping system that they're going to do. And each pole is going to have a barcode. A digital ID. The line you can go up to it, scan it, know everything about the pole. The attachments, what's going on in that overnight situation. I guess the GPS is kind of the first step. GPS in a pole is kind of the first step of the mapping. And the mapping is going to be done at no charge to us. They're going to do that with a line and that might be on light duty or something like that. So they'll be able to get the wire sizes, conductor sizes, everything into their system, just like they do in their system. Which we've never had. Another big bonus of that mapping is the locating part. It's going to be sent directly to our locators. So then a locator comes in, locator request, you know. City lights is really higher for that. That'll pop up on their system. They locate the city. Not another ground here. Or we've got to go off locations. And then any future expansions of the system too. Then I'll be able to just leave that GPS in you. And I'll leave that into the mapping. So that pole inspection was just kind of the first step to get everything started. We haven't as a city committed to Minnesota Power doing the operation.
What age pole do they want to go around, start to testing anything that's older than ten years? They want to run through a wall.
Their spec is actually twenty.
Their spec is twenty.
Twenty years.
So if it's less than twenty years old, they just do a.
The sound. But they do the sound thing.
So they just check it off. They would still GPS it.
If we didn't, what they said, if we didn't have them do the inspection, because we just did one three years ago. Then they wouldn't go out to each pole and GPS them, just GPS them. If they're going to barcode them or GPS them, they'll inspect them. But if they aren't inspecting them, then they'll go with a map. We have to kind of put them in on their system, but they won't be guaranteeing us everything's that.
Exact location.
Right?
Yeah, it's slightly frustrating because we just did the inspections in two thousand and eleven. So we're only gaining three years. But we may find goals that are, they're going to get an extra treatment or.
They look like a woodpecker to them.
Can I ask them that question?
The big bill's not a problem.
They fill. They fill.
Oh, do they plug them?
Yeah. Some kind of filler stuff they put in them. If they're depending on the rot also, then there's some kind of filler they put in the town.
So as far as the drilling, it's not a concern. So when they take samples, it's, you know, one on the bottom, one in the middle, one on the top?
No, all of them are right at the level of the ground.
And if we're going to go with, you know, and I think Minnesota Power, I, you know, when we did it three years ago, we had it inspected. Bob and I just talked, well, we had nine poles replaced. Yeah, it's kind of a catch twenty-two, but, you know. They could be charging us for this mapping deal too. And that would be, you know, I guess.
It sounds like a good, I don't know, it sounds like a good deal for us.
Part of that mapping too, they say that information belongs to them. When they do the mapping, that information belongs to them.
You know, if we need to ask them something, I think they would tell us, but they aren't going to turn over that GPS information. Like if we end our contract with them.
They won't.
They won't turn that GPS information over us to use with the next people. But if we need something. But if we need something.
But they would give you.
Right, they give out.
You know, or whatever, they'll work with you. I mean, because this public works, you need to. And I, I understand that we won't own it. But as long as we have access to it.
If we're not paying for it, yes.
Right.
I didn't know, like if they're going to us, we talked about that.
Yeah, we have to do something as far as the transformers. They don't do anything with transformers right now. We don't have any storage for transformers that get replaced. That's something. Because we have to dispose of that then, correct? Yeah. They dress that in that contract.
How to work with rolling.
They actually.
They have a, all they have to buy meat, they have a spot where they put their transformers in.
And we have to have a plan for like if there would be a oil leak or spill from those, all that kind of stuff, since we're taking care of it, right?
So we would be, could we still work with Crow Wing and dispose through them?
Well, here's the issue, the contractor that Minnesota Power uses. So there's nothing additionally that's going to be built up by the shop to store? There is, what do you, do you have them crossed or something like that? Right, that would be. So in a whole series of a containment deal, you needed it, there was just. Some slab with burns on the side or whatever. What's up with you, not too extravagant?
Six foot by eight foot maybe. Just right behind that one, right behind that one wall. Yes, you know, sides hundred by eighty.
Just concrete.
I don't even think they parted it. I think it was something they brought in and they just set down.
Set, it was pre-made, so it's probably made so.
Whatever's mixed in with it, it'll crack or whatever, you know. City ran, just going empty.
If you get a housing there, have a new communication plan. You know, get a draft, so we don't have to try to get the wall.
So, and we don't pay anything like for them to be on call with that rate. But if we have to call them out, they're guaranteed a minimum two hour call time, I think is what. Call out time.
When it's after hours.
When it's after hours.
So they were paying Crow Wing a monthly fee?
A monthly fee, yeah.
Monthly fee will go away, but I think they're higher, a little bit higher.
Going to be a wash.
The only thing they did say is they would like to, if we're going to go with them, they would like to know sooner. Because they would like to use most of the summer to do the job.
How long the contract?
They only, we're going to start the first of January.
They were at Crow Wing Power for twenty years or whatever. How long before?
It did say the length of service.
December thirty first.
So with all this mapping, obviously Minnesota Power is going to have everything GPS, everything mapped. Now, if any event, something would come up, are we going to be kind of held, you know, accountable to stay with them? Because they have all the mappings, so they're switching back to.
We know just the provider or.
If we, if we had to go on GPS every pole, would you, would you try to transfer that information? I think would be.
And I, I just think Minnesota Power is the way to go, that's who we're buying from.
Right.
We don't have a lot of options.
No.
No, that's hiring linemen or.
Yeah, unless we want to hire our own.
But Crow Wing is, because it actually, you know, I said, Crow Wing is getting a lot of.
Yeah.
So it's not like we're not abandoning somebody. They're saying we're going to be done. Jerry Van Kierens retiring and that's why they were doing it, you know.
Who looked into bringing it, probably. Might be an option, but just the distance.
Yeah. Our response time is going to be better with Minnesota.
Well, and if you have a major deal where they're trying to deal something with something in Brainerd area or whatever, Crow Wing County, you know, where are we going to fall? You know, as far as, as far as the service goes, they're going to have to do their whole areas first, you know, of a certain, I think. Yeah, I mean, I just don't know if that's.
I encourage you to go ahead and at least at one of the next meetings, make a decision and say, we're going to have them as of January one. So that when they take over, there's not a glitch.
And they said if we have any desire, any questions, wanted to know more about this GIS thing and mapping and that kind of thing. We could contact, I don't remember if we went from downtown or who, but Paula Lilly over at Minnesota Power kind of is in charge of that. And you could call and set up a time to win. And she would show you the system and how it works and that kind of thing. If anybody had an interest from the councils, she was willing to do that. If you wanted more of that.
If it's handy, we have GPS and work and have a tech on it. Just to get around, not that it's very handy.
It's a safety concern when they're dealing with all the just.
No, I guess both. My responsibility is to give the electric, maybe to plan, gather any more information they think they may need and come up with a front concept, something that's, 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 you get to look at it on the board.
I think Scotch has, that's what they're. Right, I think that's what they're.
If there's anything you see that needs to be added or any questions or concerns, it'd be nice to have a see a couple.
It's a pretty short contract.
Yeah, there's not a whole lot.
I didn't read through it yet.
Okay. Okay, that's good.
Thanks, Bob.
And you guys also talked about Park Avenue deal?
Uh, we did. I didn't think mine, it was about ninety thousand, there are four thousand.
Ninety-four thousand?
Ninety-four thousand to buy out eleven households.
Ninety-four thousand or nine hundred forty thousand.
Here, let me review.
Ninety-four thousand.
Okay, here. Ninety-four to fifty-six to be exact. There is twenty-one thousand of installation. Let's see where we go. Book value, what was they saying? Ten year loss of revenue, seventy-six thousand, four hundred and thirty-seven dollars that they got to get. Because they were going to lose that revenue.
So that's added on to the ninety-four.
No, that's what makes it up to ninety-four. Before that, it was pretty cheap.
That's what the revenue lost.
The only hidden cost is for us to hook up. Figure out what road we've got to go across and hook in with our own electric. That would be the hidden cost.
That's not our, that's not us hooking up those people.
Them.
That's us to buy them out. So at that stage, we have to figure out where we can get our electric from. Tunnel it under the road, come up and then we would have.
The integration cost.
It'd take fifty-five years to recoup that.
Or better.
Ninety-four thousand is a good chunk of change for eleven houses.
Well, they figured their revenue loss up to ten years.
This is the new shell, this is the installation.
They think their revenue loss was seventy-five thousand over ten years.
That was that number.
Well, like I said, we looked into this years ago, Jeff Furman and I, and we were directed by the council at that time to look at it. It was an astronomical amount then, it was just. It doesn't pay. This is just part.
I told them that's why they still own those eleven.
Yeah, and I think they still can have them.
Yeah, that's Park Avenue we're talking about.
That'd be fun, Huppoysel down to Dave Fisher.
If they don't know, it would include Arlen and it would.
And Rushmore. They're part of the eleven, I was twenty-nine.
Everything within the city limits and those guys are in the city limits.
Yes.
And what was their overall price?
Ninety-four thousand, two hundred and fifty-six.
So actually we do look at about a thirteen year. If their loss.
Here. Have the paper.
That's what they're figuring for their loss revenue.
It's about a ninety year payback. Because they don't have to figure in any of their capital expenses. It's all just their variable expenses. Because they still have to have.
I'm just looking at rates alone.
Because they still have to have their office building in Duluth, you know, all that costs. And they don't have to report that on there. It's just a variable cost.
Yeah.
Anything else coming up, anything else? We have some drafts. Scotty got a draft from our attorney, two of the industrial art lots. It would be one for Tom, for Smokey Oil, and the other one is after Cory. Jack and Cory, because they're pretty much existing. I think he only made one copy.
Yeah, there's, there's one copy in here.
And then Jack and Cory.
Or is it just a name change?
Somebody short one? I got two copies. One's for Tom. I want to even red eye.
Midwest.
Yeah, it'd be Midwest, I hope that's.
I know, I just can't see. Is this one, do you want to talk off this then?
Yeah, the quoting cost?
Yeah.
Yeah. And what were the actual quoting costs? I got mine buried somewhere.
If you look at what I circled, this would be the total.
Two hundred and twenty-nine dollars?
And ninety cents, because it was a hundred eighty-two, twenty-five for the drafting of the documents, one sixty-five for the deed tax. And where's the other number?
Forty-six. There's two darknesses in your quarter. Okay, so ninety-two dollars there, so ninety.
Forty-six for each? Oh, that there's another one, then the number is wrong.
And the developer pays those costs?
Then it's two seventy-five ninety, I'm sorry.
Tom, you're going to have to like a quoting cost. Are we going to run me a two seventy?
Two seventy-five ninety.
Two hundred and seventy-five ninety. Actually, when I looked through it, it looked like it was actually set up. I don't know what you guys.
Yeah, I agree with that, yeah. Yeah, everything we kind of discussed in the last reading.
Yeah.
So I make a motion that we approve the draft of the purchase agreements. And that we also have the closing costs, if you want to call them that, whatever you want to call them.
There.
For the purchasers to pay the recording fees for the two documents at forty-six dollars. Each document at the deed tax of dollar sixty-five. And the attorney's fees of one eighty-two, twenty-five. Those are individual for each of the two.
Yes.
Businesses.
A motion on the floor by Stephanie, can we get a second? By the second, a second by Matt, all those in favor, please, seconded by stating aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, carried unanimously. Uh, Tom, did you want to hook up with us right after the view? Shouldn't you go fairly quick here and we'll get your documents signed and.
Okay.
Yes.
The clarification, that was for the Midwest?
Yes.
Okay, do we need to also then, do we want the, we just hear standing?
Were they ready to go, we want to have yours approved, can I hear standing?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay.
I make a motion to do.
It's the same thing, right?
Same thing, it's just that they didn't address it.
Okay.
Make the motion that we approve the, the claim deed documents, the pure sanitation at the same.
Closing costs.
Closing costs as stated.
I'll second that.
Motion on the floor by Mike, and seconded by Don Nelson, in favor, for a second by the stating aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, carried unanimously. We have the administrative committee meeting, we want to set a date on?
Yeah, let's set a date. It could be a couple of weeks later, just wanted to.
Yeah. Two weeks?
We can have a date. Will we pick on the fourth for a meeting?
Any, not a Tuesday night?
That's another question.
Not a Tuesday?
Not a Tuesday.
Let's try and do it on Monday night then.
Yeah, Monday six thirty.
That's Memorial, that's not a work.
Yep, yep, so you got the nineteenth, or you go to June second.
I don't forget, it's probably maybe. Practice that.
They can't pay me on the second.
I'm not too far from five, which is my anniversary besides.
We don't care about the practice.
It's Monday in a month.
Well, it's my twenty-fifth, so.
You don't care about the practice, do you? It's your twenty-fifth, you don't care about the. Why don't you throw that one up or they go?
That's the reason.
Stick with the main one, it's your twenty-fifth, you're dead.
I just thought, I said, I'm proud of you. I simply look at somebody's face and.
Exactly, so we starting that.
Drop that to my attention in a big hurry.
June ninety-five o'clock before the next council meeting.
Yes. Scotty, you want to send us out a email reminder?
Sure. Lynn, put it on the calendar.
She already had to put the twenty-fifth on it. A second.
You can quit the job, you got me in trouble already.
It's my job.
Okay. What did we have for billing permit approvals, we have anything?
Oh, we got a bunch.
Bunch?
A bunch.
What you got, Tom?
Weather's nice.
Spring breaking.
Do you want to hit them all one at a time? So we have Mark and Steph fighting for a twelve foot by twelve foot addition slab for this in driveway.
And replacement of the drive. The drive is getting replaced too, but I do need a permit for that because we're doing the same now.
Same thing, so let me put the picture in front, pass it down, what we're doing here.
Denied, I see a problem.
I don't care about the twelve by twelve, I just want the bowls and the driveway gone.
I don't have a problem with that.
Okay, so the second one is for.
Prove them one at a time, or you can.
You can just go ahead.
We proved them all down there, so.
So the additions is a basketball for half court.
If I had somebody that dribble a ball, it sure would be.
The second one is Penny Bush up here, the one that did her. Breakfast.
Yep.
What she's looking for is a, she has pictures of it, but it's a picket fence. She has a white picket fence on the backside of the lot. She wants to put that alongside the road, alongside the.
Alleyway.
The alleyway. We have her staying six feet from the sidewalk and six feet from the alley. Little fence is going to run north and south. She's going to put railroad ties down, I said, well, hopefully Bobby doesn't come six feet on your land and take them out. But if they do, it's your problem.
Don't worry over there.
Right. But that's her drawing, so it's going to start here and move six feet, or move to the garage. So that's the second one. Well, I mean, they end up by. Glenn Martin is the next one. Uh, it's for a garage that, oh, I'm going to design, I'll find a picture for you.
Where's that?
That is the real small street on.
Little side, that Cassie?
Side street. Or which one you're talking, this one, it's Cassie Street.
Yeah.
So they want to go up and over, so no course of the road. He's actually going to make this smaller, it'll be twelve feet from the edge, so that's going to prove.
Okay, so does that keep on the memory default?
Yes. That's Cassie Street is the one. Not the neighbor, not the, so they're making it. Next one is Midwest Sales for the construction of their new building out there. So with Dicky Talberg building, his building, he had to get rid of one of his little sheds. And his daughter Kate is, who's taking it and she's putting it on Vincent Street where she's living now, one oh five Vincent Street North. Also be back over here.
Well, they moved it yesterday, I don't know where it went.
That's where it went.
Well. Also was stinky in the neighborhood because there were three skunks living under there. And like about ten thirty yesterday morning, I thought, I heard Dicky's bobcat go on, and then I heard shotgun shells. And then I smelled.
That's where they went.
You're lucky, she hears, she can hear that shotgun shell sense.
Well, I don't think he would have done anything for it. I'm thinking he's glad Dicky took care of it instead of making Eric take care of it. So the rain today was welcome in the neighborhood.
Yeah. So the last one has that little side street I was telling about, the real short one. The real narrow one. He wants to put a chain link fence up. And so what that's going to do is, here's Third Avenue. And he's just going along to the property line. The neighbor has a fence that are ready, so he's just going to put a fence here and there.
Okay.
And that's going to prove.
Which, um.
Yes, that's the one.
Okay. Okay, is that the one?
Yep. Okay. Well, it's Tammy Simons, but that's not what, that was filled out to her, so I don't.
I wonder if that's.
And it was a young man that.
Her son-in-law or someone?
We called it.
Tullichella? That's her last name, I remember.
That's all we got.
Fine, Zonie, I was approved of all of them?
All of them are approved by Penny Zonie.
I mean, we want them to approve the, all the permits for tonight. Thousand recommended by Penny Zonie. And approved by Penny Zonie official.
Motion on the floor by Mikey, can we get a second?
Second.
Second by Donnie, all those in favor, please, seconded by the stating aye. Right, aye?
Aye, except for abstain from the fighting one.
You don't approve of it?
No, not really, but that's okay.
You're helping him for long.
Like he hasn't already.
One extension, sorry. Uh, department reports.
Nope.
Oh, we got our annual, we got our annual.
Kicking it.
That's right, July fourteenth. Put a time on there?
Noon, for a noon picnic.
Yep.
Noon.
Question mark here. Dan is open and we put it on the schedule, we just wanted to.
Okay, Dan?
Yes.
Are they asking to waive the fees?
Yes.
Yes.
It's on Monday, huh?
I make a motion, we go ahead and donate the shelters for the veterans picnic, the Harding Place Veterans Picnic for July fourteenth at noon. And they do, do one shelter, do they do both?
One.
The one shelter.
A second. War by Steph and seconded by Mike, all those in favor, please, seconded by the stating aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, carried unanimously. Bobby, you're.
Put a proposal and a package for cracked ceiling, like to continue that program. Been using Mike's share, he does excellent job. Prices competitive with other people. Total bid price was six thousand, nine hundred and ninety-seven dollars for the entire ceiling.
I just. It's sporadic.
Yeah, we've been doing them, you know, about every three years, it's kind of what they run. After you route them one time, the only thing you can do to them is just to blow and that seal.
Yep.
It's routed, it's routed, but. The idea of routing is just to get.
Put a nice even roof in there so that.
Yep. Get enough material in there so that when it expands and contracts, it'll, it'll stay sealed.
Are you looking at needing to do any of that, where they put that sand?
Chip sealing?
That stuff.
Yeah, I'm looking to do that. I actually put it all for bids and I only received one back. And the price was quite a bit higher. Yeah, I'm looking to do that, um, I actually put it all for bids, and I only received one back, and the price was quite a bit higher than I hoped, so. Looking at probably either rebidding that, or maybe upping the quantities, and see if that helps the, the pricing, so. Yeah, good.
Met someone, I'm like, midsummer, later summer, anyway.
Yeah, it's better when it's warmer, so. Maybe red next week, I'll have something for that, but. The crack ceiling, we budget seven thousand a year for that.
Can you get a motion to approve, uh, Mike Schaefer, with the, uh, crack ceiling?
I'll make that motion.
Motion on the floor by Don, can we get a second? Second, second by Mike, all those in favor, please, second by, by stating aye?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, carried unanimously.
And I'd put a call into Tri-City just for a cut or a patch areas, areas that have been paid up to the point where it's not worth it for me to clean or patch it. Um, maybe at the same unit price as last year, like a four hundred and twenty-one square feet as of right now, for a total of one thousand one hundred and fifty-seven dollars. And the patches from the water leaks, we've got four water leaks in town, that's gonna be covered by the rich, 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 rich.
Okay, they're gonna do that.
I was wondering if they were looking at.
They told me the next week, but we'll see.
Well, the one over by the high school gets so much traffic, it's just.
Put on the buses, keep it up there.
Um, just whole different, I guess, it's roads, so it's not a different subject, how about Peter Avenue, is that gonna hold up for a little bit, or do we need to start pushing to do something there?
Something like that for ten years.
Well, I know, so, I mean.
Yeah.
It's always getting worse, so.
There's a lot. That hurts to the plant, as far as maintenance, we can patch it, and that's it.
Probably need to mill it off.
Yeah, exactly, that, it'd be kinda nice, well, if you could, kind of all public council, public works deals, above this, we'd have nice, we could get an estimate on that. Peel it off, and have it repaged along with, um, Robert, or I, um, Edward. Both of two, that could be, we have that capital improvement plan, and it was in there, and like even Peter Avenue, I don't wanna do that, if I do anything, it's not, or at least have the engineer go in there
and do a survey, and just make sure that we're gonna be in a catch base, and it is flat.
Yeah, I looked at it, actually, actually, um, I'm impressed with, not the surface, obviously, but I am impressed at the basis, I'll look as well as it has, I mean, there's no dip, big dips, bumps, bumps, it's all so straight underneath, wasn't pretty easy.
It is, it's good base, it's the actualness, it's, yeah, and that's part of the idea of the chip ceiling, is to, to, that, to, 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 to protect that.
Sure.
Between, yeah, yeah. So, I mean, and the water line is fifty years old too, so, um, I started looking at doing a new surface project, and that's good for thirty years, and then that, 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 water line's eighty years old, so. That's part of the struggle, is to cut out the projects, and, you know, doing it all at once.
Well, that, it's not even doing them all at once, it exceeds excessive costs to property owners and to the city, obviously, it's unfortunate to have to be done. But.
The line's only fifty years old under there?
Straight was built in sixty-three.
So when we look at.
Your street plates are all flavored eighty-something, right?
Yeah, when we look at, at, you know, just taking a simple repave job, maybe doing some, you know, it's an additional curve, or, that, you know, you take a job that's not very expensive, you're talking, you're doing a miller, or a deal, you know, all that's, so, kinda hard to, small.
Yeah.
Right now, is there any catch bases in that street?
And don't, yeah.
But does it, it flows nicely, or?
There's so many cracks, it's, it's hard to tell.
It's hard to tell.
There's definitely pocket areas, there is no cover, it's just current.
Right.
Or in front of the apartments, it gets a little high.
We can look at it as a committee, and just, we should go through a capital improvement plan every year, and re-assess it.
Yeah. I'd like you guys to do that, because, and then we can get up and we'll focus some of these projects out, but I think we should really look at that, or at least get that point.
At least those, those two streets that are really bad, anyway.
Yeah.
How long ago did you get, you just kinda put pricing together for ballparks, or did we actually get pricing for?
No, it was ballpark.
It was?
You can't really.
When, how long ago was that done?
Two years.
Okay, so the prices should be, reflect somewhat current?
Well, when we, definitely have to get together with Bob, and know, uh.
Engineering, that's the one, that's still way off from the bid crisis.
Yeah.
Bid crisis.
Right, right.
It's hard to go on stuff like that. Yeah, we can. I mean, as far as money wise, realistically, we're three years old.
Right. Capital improvement as well. I'll take a look at, uh, maybe we'll have Scott still with us to.
That's that money back to the community, we definitely kill those law, we should.
And then, uh, my helper is not gonna come back, I had Matt Gruber last year, and, um, so you're looking at, or somebody else, two days a week, basically, when I had my shirt. Last year, we just kinda kept it separate, because we'll be fine.
Do you have any book you mind?
I don't know, I just put it out in the paper, I guess, this week.